It is nine o'clock. We are going to open the Lyon County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Thursday, January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Today on our agenda, we will be having a closed session this morning. That right after item six A, so we're gonna be looking at that. Action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public, any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. Board of County Commissioners convening as other boards, members of the Board of County Commissioners also serves as the Liquor Board, Central Lion Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting may convene as any of those boards is indicated on this or a separately posted agenda. This meeting may break between eleven-thirty and one-thirty for lunch. Roll call. I have, excuse me, I have Commissioner Keller, Commissioner Henderson, and Commissioner Hockaday, we are in chambers, and Commissioner Jacobson is on Zoom. invocation will be given by Mitch Forster, Mason Valley Southern Baptist. If you can all rise, please.
Let's pray together. Our Father in heaven, we acknowledge you as the creator of heaven and earth, the one that knows the beginning from the end, the one that has the knowledge of everything happening in our world, and we pray, Lord, that you will bless us with your guidance, with your wisdom, with your knowledge, and every decision will be made with the proof and the evidence that is necessary. We do pray, Lord, that each person presenting will be, do so in a calm way and at perfect peace. We do pray that we will have harmony, unity, and that we will have honor and respect for one another. And so, Lord, we thank you for hearing our prayer. We do look to you for your blessing and your goodness. We pray this in the name of Jesus, your beloved son. Amen.
Commissioner Keller, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Ready? Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. It is anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comments after discussion of each addenda item, but before the board takes any action. One additional comment here. On Zoom, if you will, if you will, please raise your hand if you wish to speak so that we can unmute you. It would certainly help. So again, just raise your hand. We will notice and we will let you speak. For possible action, review and adoption of agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Henderson and a second from Commissioner Keller. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I have four ayes and thumbs up from for I for Commissioner Jacobson. All right, so now we're down at six, presentation of awards and a recognition of accomplishments. Six A for presentation only, present Deputy Peter Whiten and Sergeant Alfonso Lopez with the Lyon County Sheriff's Office Community Service Award for their efforts in raising approximately eleven thousand dollars for the Shop With a Cop event. Sheriff Hope, you would come forward, please.
Sheriff Brad Pope for the record. First of all, thank the commission for allowing me to use this forum to present these two deputies with awards. Annually, the Lyon County Sheriff's Office does a Shop With a Cop program, which allows underprivileged children to get a Christmas that they normally wouldn't have. This year, with the money that these two deputies raised, we were able to provide a Christmas for twenty-nine children throughout the community. The children are selected through human services, I believe, and are accompanied by a deputy or other law enforcement officer throughout Walmart. This year, with the money these two raised, we were able to raise your gift cards up to three hundred dollars apiece, and the happiness that we spread was was well worth it. So I would like to present the first award to Deputy Peter Whitten.
Don't go too far.
And the second, Community Service Award. At the time, it's a deputy like presents Sergeant Alfonso Lopez. Usually the commission takes pictures as well.
Yep. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Jacobson, I believe your hand was up and you're ready to talk.
Yes, thank you Chairman Hockaday. Like to congratulate and thank the officers. I was very fortunate to work with both of those gentlemen in the Fernley area. I know Whitten does a great job as our school resource officer. And I would just like to say for the record that I am glad that they are a lot better at rounding up money than they are deer hunters, all right? So have a great day. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, go to Commissioner Henderson. My brain locked up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank you gentlemen as well, too, for your efforts in raising this money and just for the whole experience with Shop With a Cop. It's so important that young people's first interactions with law enforcement is positive. And this is one of the programs you guys do that helps set that path for for our youth to appreciate law enforcement and not fear them. So thank you guys very much for that.
Commissioner Keller.
Don't want to be redundant, but thank you very much. I agree with both the other commissioners and thank you.
Again, thank you very much, and it's a fantastic program. You know, the kids have a great time, and I really appreciate your efforts in getting the amount of money that you did, so they had a fantastic Christmas for them. Again, law enforcement pulls through and does a great job for the community. Thank you.
I would just like to take this opportunity to publicly thank the businesses and individuals that donated these gentlemen were able to collect funds from to support that. I wish I could hand out community service awards to all the businesses and individuals that donated as well, but we'd be up here for a long time. So with that, thank you for allowing me to present these gentlemen and their awards.
And thank you. And also, again, I will thank those businesses. I read through the list, and we have quite a few people that did donate from different businesses, and that's fantastic that they're getting involved in helping out with law enforcement and the children.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Now, we're gonna have to take a break for closed session, and it's, from my understanding, gonna take approximately about an hour. We'll see. So I'm gonna go ahead and close the meeting. Y'all stay here. We're actually gonna move back to the county manager's office and have a meeting back there. If you want to just stay seated and relax, we'll get back as soon as you can, or go grab a cup of coffee or whatever you want to do. Meeting will be adjourned until we return. I'll call the meeting back to order at ten fifteen, when to move on to item number seven. Commissioners, County Manager Report. I'll start with Commissioner Keller.
Thank you. Normally, I don't give accolades or anything to staff or employees because I kind of figure that they have a job, they're paid to do it, and that's the way I look at things. But sometimes things happen out of the ordinary, and here recently, we just had a recent event with the Atmospheric River, and at this time, I do want to recognize some people that I think really did a great job. One of them is Dustin Holman. I think he was on, yep, I see him. Normally, I don't, I expect it out of him. He's a professional that I think he can handle everything, but with the new, new way that we're structured, I really think he went out of his way during this last flooding and rockslide on Highway two oh eight in Wilson Canyon. So I just wanted to bring that up. Also, our interim county manager, Andrew Haskins, calling an emergency meeting, getting us prepared so that we can reach out for state and local federal assistance so that we can move forward before it actually happened, which is really well timed. And I also want to thank our new emergency communications manager, Taylor Allison, who just stepped into this position just days before we we end up with a emergency. So I want to thank you very much. And that's all I have.
Commissioner Jacobson. We'll unmute you.
Thank you Chairman Hockaday. I just want to apologize. My daughter's having ankle surgery up here at college, and so I needed to be up here with that. So I apologize for not being in chamber today. But I am one for recognizing employees because I do believe that our, the quality of employees that we have, they could work anywhere. And so I'm thankful that they work for Lyon County. But I too, I do want to, I had down here just thanking the personnel. I know we had, I believe, three road graders opening up a four-wheel drive path or whatever to Smith Valley. So I want to thank the crew that was all working up there to clear that and get that as open as possible. And then just all the sandbagging and preparation and extra hours that people put in to keep citizens of Dayton, Stagecoach, Silver Springs safe, especially with those flood conditions. I do applaud those efforts. That's all I have, Chairman Hockaday. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Chair. I also want to thank our employees. You know, we have, I think, you know, I've said it many times, the best county staff in the state. And once again, they proved that they went out and worked above and beyond. I thank Mr. Haskin for his productivity, Mr. Holman and Mr. Homestead for their hard work and more important, for their employees' work. You know, we do have an amazing staff. Now, I attended the Mount House Advisory Board meeting on January third. They, of course, are interested in moving the transfer of the fire station over to the county along so that we can get moving on their community center. I attended the Dayton Regional Advisory Board as well. Nothing really to report there. It was kind of a a quiet, quiet meeting. There was one planning item on there, and it's about adding the garage to a home in the Comstock Historic District. Also attended the National Association of Counties Public Lands Steering Committee meeting. I saw in that committee, and one thing that came out of that meeting that I found interested, interesting, I should say, the Forest Service is being sued by a organization saying that they need to have a Clean Water Act permit before they can use fire retardants on wildfires. That scares the heck out of me because it's not too far for a leap from that to any use of fire retardants on any fire. So it's just something I want to put on everybody's radar to watch out for. I also attended the Campo meeting, and one thing that was interesting on there, Douglas County, which Campo and comes as a little part of Douglas County. Douglas County has reached out to ask Campo to do some traffic modeling for them. So I've asked for Mr. Haskin about that. I don't know how we do our traffic modeling. I don't know if anything we'd be interested in, but it's something that we need to look at. And thank you.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to also reiterate that staff did a great job. I was out and about driving around Smith Valley quite a bit, taking pictures of things and sending them to staff. They were responding quite quickly. And I appreciate that, making phone calls to people who were concerned about the flooding and roads and things that were breaking down in in Smith Valley. So with two oh eight blocked, I do appreciate the work that's being done on Mason Pass Road. I do realize that once the sun comes out, it turns into a mud quagmire. So we will definitely keep working on that, but you know, just you couldn't ask for more more response, and I do appreciate that response. So from that point, we'll move on to the County Manager Report.
Thank you, and Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager, for the record. Not to pile on too much, but I too want to thank staff. Staff's been amazing through this through the weather since the beginning of the year. Everybody's been working long hours, working on holidays, trying to keep the roads cleared from snow, trying to keep all the, all of the floodwaters at bay, trying to keep the mud at bay. So I just want to thank everybody, Mr. Mr. Homestead and his team, Mr. Holman and his team, Mr. Burketa, and Shayla's team, and then, of course, I'm sorry, Ms. Holmes team, and then Taylor Allison, our new emergency manager, communications manager. Everyone really did a great job through the storm, and so I really appreciate that. One thing I do want to inform the board of is that I did authorize five thousand ninety dollars and eighty-four cents out of contingency on an emergency basis for the NDF hand crews that we had out filling sandbags in the Dayton area. So I'm required to inform the board of that at the next board meeting. So that's what I'm doing. Moving forward, we're going to be monitoring future storms, obviously, and also the snowpack that we have. I don't know if you've seen any of the reports recently, but the, all of the snow packs along the Sierra are much higher than average at this point. Now, that can change with the weather, depending on how many more storms we get. If we don't get a whole lot more precipitation, it could come back down to a more normal level, but you know, if we get more storms, then it'll continue to rise. And so that is something we'll be monitoring as we look forward to spring and summer with the runoffs and making preparations for that. Wanted to inform the board, we did receive three proposals for the solid waste franchise, and so we will be going through that. And I, we tentatively have that meeting scheduled for, or that that item scheduled for the first meeting in February. However, it'll kind of happen, depend on when the fifth commissioner gets appointed. So we'll, like I said, we'll tentatively have that scheduled for the first meeting in February, but it might get pushed depending on that. I will be speaking at the NMDA State of the Counties Breakfast next week. I just wanted to let everyone know that. That's an annual breakfast that they do in January to just kind of provide an update on, or have the county managers from each county within the region provide an update on how things are going with their county. So it's usually a well-attended event. Other than that, we are gearing up for the legislative session. I've already been receiving drafts of the bills, so going through all that, trying to figure out what that's gonna look like. Obviously, there will be plenty more bills to come, so that'll be keeping me pretty busy here for the next bit. And then finally, I want to touch on one thing. I know Commissioner Hockaday touched on Mason Pass Road, and the county has been working to make sure that Mason Pass Road has been graded as people do use that as a back and forth between Smith Valley and Mason Valley. But I, you know, we're still encouraging people to go around if they can through Carson City because of the mud and because of the snow and the weather. We're not recommending that as like an official alternative route, and we realize that people are using it, so we're doing doing our best to keep that clean, but I do want to throw that out there. We have been having a number of folks trying to use other routes through that area as well, such as Delphi Road, and there's another road that goes over, I think it's Hudson. But those roads have not been cleared. They are not county maintained roads. Neither is Mason Pass technically, although we have been, like I said, trying to keep a path clear there. So I, you know, we have road closed signs out there, and people are still going around the road closed signs, and then they're getting upset that the county won't come with our equipment and pull them out. We are not a tow company. We're not gonna do that. So, you know, I've seen some Facebook posts and whatnot from folks, so I just, I want to want to stay here at the meeting that those are not alternate routes. Don't use Delphi Road. Don't, don't use any of the other other routes. Like I said, we have road closed signs out there. If you run into a road closed sign, don't go around it. I know I was talking with the Sheriff's Department this morning, and there was somebody stuck again last night, and they said, oh, yeah, we saw your sign. We went around it. So just, I cannot stress that enough. I don't know what else we could do. We posted it on social media. I had seen news stories about it, so just want to make sure that
You can't fix stupid.
Yeah, I mean, that's really what it comes down to. So I, but I just want to stay here for the record. Don't, don't use those roads. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, the commissioners? No, just, I know that I stopped by the Emergency Operations Center last week, and Taylor was in there working, and I said, yeah, a little trial by fire, and she goes, well, that's why your emergency management's here. So she was doing her job, sitting there, taking calls and working as best she could. I will make a comment, though, as, as you said, with Mason Pass Road. For those in Smith Valley, you need to go out Artesia. First thing I did last week was drive out towards Delphi, and I wouldn't even think about going further than the asphalt road off of Hudson Aurora and anything else, any other north-south road out there is not a good road to move, except, as I said, Artesia to Mason Pass. And that's probably the only way you should try to make the trip. Wouldn't that be very good? Any other comments in?
Just, just, just want to, Mr. Chair, I know I've said this before, but I want to say it again. I want to thank you again for how proactive you are. You know, you will never ever get pushed back from me for you being proactive in a situation, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, super job. Okay, so now we're gonna move into elected official reports. Do I have any elected officials that want to get up and talk? Doesn't look like anybody's jumping up. We'll move on to appointed officials' reports. No appointed officials moving. Do I have anything on? Okay, we do have Dr. Titus, Senator Dr. Titus waving her hand. Unmute.
Dr. Titus, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Should be able to unmute now.
Great, thank you. I am both an appointed and elected official representing Lyon County in so many ways. Just an update on that road closures. I met personally with Congressman Amity over the weekend on the X, getting any federal funds, getting any federal regulations or permitting process in an expeditious manner. I talk daily with Endot. I've met with and spoken with the BLM folks, and so fortunately, I found out yesterday, they do Endot did sign a contract with an engineering group. They're gonna get some rock climbers out there, hopefully in the next day or two, depending on the weather, to do some assessment and really analyze what's going on, and then hopefully they'll be able to give us some timeline on how long it's gonna take, but as many of you have already stated, there's lots of rumors out there about what the county's not doing and enclosures, et cetera, but just know that it is moving along, and there are lots of us out there trying to get this stuff as fast as possible. And the good news is we do have a, Endot has signed a contract. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. It looks like we have Mr. Holman.
Thank you. This is Dustin Holman, Road Director, for the record. Just, I guess to start out, I'd like to to throw out some kudos to, to staff as well. Taylor Allison, she jumped right in to the emergency communications manager position with both feet, has done an excellent job. As you guys were aware, I was kind of filling in that, that position a little bit since, since Mr. Page had left, and and so with her starting was, was a huge help to me where I could focus more on, on road and fleet type stuff through this whole event from the first of the year. So she has done an awesome job. I would also like to give a shout out to David Burketa and Doug Homestead and all of their crews, just for the, for the help through the flooding in Dayton. They both were there, had, had guys ready. Mr. Burketa's guys helped us with some road issues. We just didn't have enough staff to cover everywhere. We were having issues when we were having the flooding. So that was a significant help as well. And to, to their crews and to my road guys, I mean, we're, we're stretched pretty thin with the equipment and snow removal and dealing with, with Mason Pass and Artesia Road, and so we're just, we're doing the best that we can with what Mother Nature has given us to work with. I would also like to thank County Manager Haskins for all of his support and his work. I know he was out helping NDF crews place sandbags on a Saturday over in Dayton before the flooding, and he has just given us significant support, so I would like to throw that out as well. So moving on to Mason Pass and Artesia. Mother Nature has not helped us at all there with, with all the snow that we have gotten. We're to a point right now, we've got most of the snow knocked off of that road. We're trying to do some blading on Artesia. Mason Pass is still too muddy. If we do too much with our equipment, we're gonna make it worse until we can get it to dry out. So I'm hoping that by Monday, the weather stays straightened out, and we can, then first part of next week, we can really go gung ho on getting it bladed because it's pretty rough. There's a lot of potholes, some, some water ruts where the snow melts is just running across the road. There's really nowhere to send that water in some of those locations. So we're doing everything that we can, so I just ask the, the public to be patient with us, or we're working at it. And along with that, we have significant other issues in the valleys, not just, just Mason Pass Road. I mean, we've got roads everywhere that, that have gotten washed out, some sinkholes and one that we just fixed out near Wilson Canyon this morning, got, got that issue fixed, so the residents can get in and out of their road now. So we've just, we've got stuff going all over the near Wilson Canyon this morning, got, got that issue fixed. So the residents can get in and out of their road now. Um, so we've just, we've got stuff going all over the county right now. So just be patient with us. And with that, I would uh, answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, Commissioner Jacobson? Yep.
Uh, there we go. Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. No, just uh, hats off to you, Mr. Holman. Nice job. And, and again, I thanked your crew. I hope, you know, um, you heard, you were able to hear that, but great job. And, and uh, I guess with frustration comes job security. So well done and uh, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson. Good. Commissioner Keller. Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Holman, I would say that you guys did a phenomenal job when I called in about Copper Belt Road and the sinkhole. And I think that was what, two days ago? Um, and, and you, and you fixed it. Unbelievable. The people out there are very, very happy about that. So the response again, and as I said before, is, is phenomenal. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to, oh, oh, Mr. Homestead.
Yeah, I'd like to also thank my staff. They've been out on all the holidays, working, trying to clear buildings and that, and along with Dustin's crews. And um, also I was in the emergency uh, center on Dayton and uh, Andrew and and Taylor did an excellent job. And, and I think there, we got a good fit there with this group and, and I hope to see it working forwards. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Homestead? And I see someone else slyly moving up. Uh, Mr. Foley.
Josh Foley, comptroller. I wasn't planning to give him a report today, but I get the impression that Commissioner Henderson has a question.
I, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair, if I may.
You bet.
There, there, there's an item on the consent agenda that I'm not going to pull off. I got to tell you, and this is really kind of, I think, shows how sick I am. But I got the year-to-date on the budget, I got excited and I went through every page of it. Yeah, I, I really appreciate having this information. I do have a few questions. I'll come see you in your office about. But I just want to say how much I appreciate you putting this information together for us. That was it. Thank you.
That was easy.
And that's how, and I've also been reading bills, so.
Yeah.
I need a life.
It, it is a lot to look through. I'll tell you that. Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda then, having said that. Oh, I'm sorry. This is the Advisory Board. Yep, thank you. Uh, do I have any Advisory Board reports? Okay, doesn't look like any hands are up. Oh, I'm sorry. We'll jump in up there. Go ahead.
Aaron Lopez, for the record, I was just going to mention that on March 4th at eight thirty, we're having the annual open meeting law training. So we just wanted to make sure that we wanted to invite all entities, so hospital districts, GIDs, anyone who has a committee board would like to attend. Um, I will send out some formal emails, but I just wanted to make an announcement today. So if you know of anyone who would like to come to that training, we would please get in touch with me.
Thank you. Now I'm looking at the board here openly. I don't see anything else. No hands, nobody in the audience. So now we will move on to the consent agenda. Action will be taken on all items, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action. And without an extensive hearing, any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. Uh, commissioners, anybody have something to pull? I see nothing there. Anybody from the public that uh, feels that something should be pulled from the consent agenda? I don't see anything on Zoom. Uh, therefore I'm looking for a motion. Looks like items eleven A through fourteen E.
Mr. Chair, I moved, we approved the consent agenda items eleven A through fourteen C.
Second. C or E?
C. E. Oh, it is an E.
E, okay, you have fourteen E.
I didn't put my glasses on.
Um, do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor, say aye.
I saw Jacobson has his hand up.
Yep. Okay. Oh, Mr. Jacobson, Commissioner Jacobson, I see your hand up. Is that just to say aye?
Yeah, that was to uh, get it so I could speak. I will be voting for the approval of the consent agenda.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So with that, he also gave us a thumbs up. So we have four ayes and it passes. Let's move on to fifteen A. Fifteen, County Manager, we have fifteen A and I see you jumping up. So we will, Mr. Haskin.
You want to read it into the record first?
I will read it into the record if you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay. For possible action for the recommendation of up to three candidates to Governor Lombardo, from which the governor may choose to make the final appointments to fill the vacant commissioner seat for District Three. We have a clerk affidavit. Uh, we have author Shell, or Arthur Shell, Gary Gladwell, Jerry Baker, Joseph Pickett, Philip Woolley and Tammy Hendricks as applicants.
All right, Andrew Haskin, uh, County Manager for the record. So this is the process that the Governor's Office has asked us to do to forward three names for possible appointment to the vacant commissioner seat for District Three. Um, my only suggestion before we move into the item is that um, we kind of establish a process for how this item's going to go before um, we get too far. So.
Okay.
Turn it over.
Mr. Chair, yes.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Haskin. Just to clarify, we have been asked to submit three names, but not any, in, any ranked order.
Correct. Yeah.
I believe the agenda's item said up to, we don't have to give three.
That's correct, up to.
Correct. The agenda item does say up to three. The Governor's Office did ask for three, but um, if the board chooses to send less than, than three names, then um,
I think we can send three, we send three.
Yeah. Um, I do have a few things that I was going to mention here. First of all, uh, I'd like to have some general comments, if we have them, about the item. Uh, Commissioner Jacobson, if you have any general comments that you'd like to make before we kind of get started on talking the process. And then we'll discuss the process and move on with that. But uh, just strictly general comments, um, thing you have to say about it would be appreciated.
Uh, no, I'd like to thank uh, uh, the community for sending emails and, and uh, voicemails and whatnot on their support. For, for one particular person or another, I received a few of those. And uh, I too look forward to sending three names to our governor.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Henderson, general comment?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, first thing I want to do is to thank the six people who applied for applying. It takes, it takes a little bit to sit up here. You know, because whatever you do, you're going to make somebody mad. So, so uh, I, I just appreciate you being willing to stand up and serve your county. So uh, looking forward to going through the process.
Commissioner Keller, general comment?
None at this time.
Okay. What I'd like to do, since I did coordinate a process with District Attorney Rye, uh, I will go ahead and mention the process that we discussed and then open it up for Commissioner input. We will have public comment, uh, and I'll discuss that momentarily. Uh, the process that we felt would be most applicable with open meeting law and our discussions being open up here in the board would be that we do first of all draw numbers for presentation because obviously the person, the person that presents something first may not be, get all of the information that they'd like to say, or the person who presents last may have, uh, jog their memory on things that they'd like to say. So we will be drawing numbers for presentation because we will allow each of the applicants a five-minute presentation. Again, this is all negotiable. I'm just saying what was uh, discussed with the District Attorney. Uh, so we will go ahead and draw numbers. That will be for presentation and for when we go down the roll for voting.
Are we going to draw a number for the people in chambers and let the people online go first?
What I think we could probably do for people online would be, the, the easiest thing would be maybe to have the county manager reach in and pull a number for them. Uh, if that's agreeable, we'll, we'll figure that out in a minute. I'll get through the process here. Uh, the applicants will have five minutes to present their however they want to make their presentation. The uh, Board of County Commissioners may have questions and/or make comments after each presentation. Please, for the audience, no applause, cheering or comments from the audience during or after the applicant's presentation. Public comments after the conclusion of all applicant presentations. So the audience on Zoom and in chambers will be able to make their comments about any or all of the applicants at that time. Of course, public comments will be limited to three minutes. Please avoid repeating the same comments. If you agree with a previous speaker, just make the statement that you agree with Speaker A or B or whatever. No personal attacks. Positive comments are always appreciated. The voting, and again, this is, as I talked to uh, the District Attorney, voting will be conducted by Commissioner Roll Call. And that will also be based on the number that the, the applicants draw. So we will, whoever is first, we will bring their name up and get a vote from the commissioners. We are supposed to support sending three applicant names to the governor. So after much discussion, we've kind of decided that we will have three votes. Because if you vote yes on everybody, we end up being back at the same place with six people as applicants. So uh, that's something that I believe we should limit ourselves to um, supporting three of the candidates. But again, it's up to three. If you only want to vote for one, you may. Uh, but you have the opportunity to vote for three because the governor wanted three candidates. When we do our voting, if you vote aye, it would be in support of forwarding the applicant's name to the governor. And a nay vote would be to not forward the name. So that's the process that we kind of looked at. And now I would like to open it up to the commissioners for their input as to whether they can agree with the process, want to change the process, so we can get moving on this as quickly as possible. Um, let me start with Commissioner Henderson. If you have any thing that you'd like to include, exclude, or whatever your choice may be.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. And um, I, I think it's a, a pretty straightforward process and I, I like the way that you have laid it out. Um, I was go, I was thinking about the possibility of, of asking the uh, applicants to step outside so that there's one at a time giving their presentation. However, I don't know how that would work since we have someone on, on Zoom. So I'm not going to ask it. We'll just go how, let's go how it goes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure. I think the District Attorney would have to have a comment on whether or not we could ask somebody to leave during that process. So yeah, I don't, okay, good. Fantastic. Uh, we'll go with Commissioner Keller. Any comments on the process possible?
Well, after they give, after all testimonies took and everything, uh, you're going to start going through by the number. And so uh, if we don't come to a majority on a person, then we could be voting six times, not three. Because if, you know, how it's going to work out, because if that person isn't moving forward, I still have a vote to move forward. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
We could be voting more than six times.
Yeah, we could be voting quite a bit to, to narrow it down. But you know, if somebody gets four votes, then they're in, and then we got the last five to consider back and forth. Uh, yeah, so that would mean we would have to pick two of the remaining five. We'll kind of, we'll kind of keep track of that as we go, but um.
Again, I, we don't have to send all three. And I know a couple of commissioners have stated that they would like this in three, but these, all applicants go to the state because they're applying at the state. This is just of whether or not we make that recommendation. And, and there's some that I'm not going to recommend. I mean, I'm just because there's a spot. It's also, in my opinion, could they fill the spot and be good at it? You, you know, so I represent the people that elected me and I'm not going to just put people in there to fill a, a spot. So that's where I feel. So we can move forward.
All right. And Commissioner Jacobson, comments on the process?
Chairman Hockaday, I, I totally get what you said and support it. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you for your input. So at this point, um, we will go ahead and have the applicants that are here and we'll just go down kind of in order. Um, so Arthur Shell can come up and draw a number. And then we will place that number next to their name. And that's the way they will be with the presentation. Okay. Number four, uh, Mr. Gladwell. Mr. Baker. Not online? Not?
I don't see Mr. Baker.
Okay. You want to, we'll draw one. Uh, he won't, of course, probably make a presentation, but we do need to have him in order for voting. Yep.
Three?
Three, same. Mr. Woolley.
We skipped over.
Who did I skip?
Maybe it's just different order.
Five. Did I get one stuck together?
God, I got a juzit.
Oh. Okay. All right. So now we're going to go Mr. Pickett. And I think he's online. Yep. So we'll draw one for you, Mr. Pickett.
One?
Who? Number one, you'll be our number one presenter.
That means Miss Hendrick will be six.
Miss Hendricks. Pretty simple on that one. All right. So first up will be Mr. Pickett. Uh, we will give you a five-minute presentation time. And I will set my clock here for a long, let's see, stop. Got it.
I'm busy.
There we go. And anytime you're ready, you may start your presentation.
Sweet. Audio check.
You're good.
We can hear it.
Very good.
So I'm Joseph Pickett. Uh, I have lived in Sage Coach for three years. I'm the founding president, current president of seven seven five Off-Road and Recovery. So when we talk about the detours from the landslide, my crew has been out there pulling people out of the muck. Um, and that's something we, we do regularly in the hills. Uh, I've been a hotel manager for fifteen years. I've been on a tourism board as treasurer and president or chair. Uh, so I do have quite a bit of experience when it comes to serving on a board. When we talk about representatives, you know, we look at, we want a leader, someone who's practical, someone who considers facts over their emotions, someone who is capable, and someone who is trusted by the community. Those, those first few things, I think most of us in this room and candidates can probably offer, but the trusted part is a very important key when representing the community. If we look at some of the top concerns, I think construction concerns, water concerns, and then general quality of life are issues that need to be addressed in our county. And my concerns of quality of life is going to be different than everybody else's version of what quality of life looks to them. And so a good leader takes that information and makes an appropriate decision on, on what the people want. Not necessarily what I want or what the leader wants, but what the people want. Trust is earned by behavior, and that's very important. Just because you're sitting in a commissioner's seat, just because you're an elected official, doesn't mean you're automatically trusted. That trust is done by behavior and what you do for the community. I think it's safe to say that generally speaking, government officials are not trusted, especially if they're long-term government officials. I think having someone who is already a pillar of the community and is already trusted by the community needs to, to fill that seat. That's the only way where the community can gain, or how the commission can gain trust of the community is by having someone that is part of the community, someone that is already trusted and is loved by the community, who serves the community already out of their own pocket, should, should be in that seat. I, I love, I love the community. I moved here from, from city life. I love it. I think it's great. I know that I would be able to do the job. It's nothing that I haven't done before. Community interests are important because my personal interest is going to be different than maybe what the community thinks. I know I can do that. I also know I'm not the person, the best person for the job. When I saw Phil Woolley's name show up on, on the agenda, he, he's the guy. He, he's the guy. He, he loves the community. So I'm formally withdrawing my application because Phil Woolley is the man.
Okay, formally withdrawing your application, Mr. Pickett. That's that's really something. I appreciate that. Mr. Rye, we just basically pull that out then, and we're, we move along. Is that how we're going to have to work that? Not sure how the official thing works here. Always being hit by new stuff.
Steve Rye, District Attorney. Yeah, I appreciate Mr. Pickett coming forward with that, and the board should just withdraw that application.
Okay. We will pull that application. Thank you, Mr. Pickett, for your time. Very nice speech, too, also. Okay. So we'll move on to Mr. Gladwell.
For the record, Garrett Gladwell, I'm not going to take five minutes. I'm a former candidate for District Three, County Commissioner. I ran for the office on a couple of occasions. I got 3,000 votes the last election. I've been a off and on resident of Lyon County since 1988, and I reside within my home right now since 1998. And I think I could bring my personal knowledge of how the county interacts with business and individuals to the board. I think I could be a mediating factor with, over bureaucratic or being too bureaucratic within the county. I, I, I deal with the county quite a bit, at a personal and a business level. Not a very good public speaker, as you guys can see, but so I would, I would like to bring my business acumen to the county. I'm fiscally conservative. I've ran a business in this county for the past 20 years. I hope the board will consider my application, and the rest of what I've done is on my resume that I submitted to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gladwell. And we'll look to the board now for any questions that you, if you would, wouldn't mind staying up there for, for your questions. Okay, no problem.
Thought I was off the hook there for a couple of seconds.
Not so fast, right? Let's go with Mr. Henderson. Do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Gladwell, welcome. Nice to see you. Do you, you understand that Nevada is considered a Dillon's Rule State? A Dillon's Rule State?
No.
Okay. I want to ask you that question.
Well, if you explain Dillon's Rule.
Okay, yeah, let, let, let me do that real quick. Dillon's Rule. Absolutely. I can explain what Dillon's Rule is. But I have a question based on what Dillon's Rule is. Okay, thank you. Okay, Dillon's Rule. Judge John Dillon was a Iowa State Supreme Court Justice in 1868. He issued an opinion that says local governments are a creation of the state and therefore only have the powers expressly granted to them by the state, by the legislature. What that means, Nevada is considered a Dillon's Rule State. So what that means is there are some, that, that local government's hands are tied in the state of Nevada. So there are things that we may want to do that we can't do. Do you understand that?
Correct.
Okay, that, that's all I wanted to get at. Yeah, thank you. That was a question I had.
Did you have a follow-up question? Okay.
No, no, that was, that, that was the question that you, you, you understand that what the county government, what the, what?
County Commission is a body created by the state, and they can only enforce rules or regulations that the state empowers.
Exactly. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go with Mr. Jacobs or Mr. Keep saying it. Commissioner Jacobson. Any questions for Mr. Gladwell?
I, I'm a little skeptical on asking questions of one candidate and not the others. And right now I can see probably everyone's digging into, I, I will not be asking any questions of candidates until maybe the very end, so you don't have to ask me on anymore.
Okay, that's fine. Mr. Keller, do you have any question?
I agree with Rob. That's exactly what I'm doing is wait till the end.
Okay, we can do that. And say, when we discussed the process, that was kind of when, you know, I could have used the input, but hey, it's, it's fine. We got it. We got it down now.
If that's the way we want to do it, I won't ask questions either.
No, that's fine. We, we can ask questions at the end.
Would have been nice to know.
Okay, yeah, we're, we're good. Because I was very much open to changing the process, so now that we have the input on that, we will be maybe asking you back up at the end, okay? So we will move on to number three presenter, which is going to be Mr. Baker. Oh, Mr. Baker wasn't here. So that's an easy one there. Move on to Mr. Schell.
For the record, Arthur Schell. And I'm submitting to be hopefully selected on the basis of I'm, what you'd say, kind of new, not the best public speaker either, so kind of new. I've only been in Lyon County since 2014. Worked in Lyon County, and I am currently working for the state of Nevada. Military service. I'm also part of the historical group. My, my basis on wanting to do this is to try and help out my community a lot better, things with the children, the elderly, veterans groups, and to try and bring things and programs to them instead of having to drive an hour either way, which is a huge inconvenience to anybody. And that's my pitch.
Sorry. Okay, no, that's fine. That's perfectly okay. So I think we're, Mr. Woolley. Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Phil Woolley, and I am here because the people of Lyon County made me do it. I, as soon as this position became available, I had a lot of people contacting me over phone, text, next door, TikTok everywhere, trying to get me to apply for this position. And after I did, I received a huge amount of support. My phone has been going off ever since. And just a little background on me, I am the president and founder of Desert Pigs, and we are a nonprofit organization that goes out and cleans up the desert every Saturday or Sunday, depending on, depending on the weekend. And I also host blood drives all over Nevada, and oh, and I'm going to be part of the pit count coming up. We're going to be coordinating that to try to get as many volunteers as we can out there to count the homeless and to connect them with any sort of services they may need. I have little or no experience when it comes to this position. I've stood in these chambers twice. Once was to defend legal brothels where I worked at the time, which I don't anymore. And another time was to receive an award for my work with Desert Pigs. And as far as what I can do for the community, I spend all of my waking hours pretty much taking care of Lyon County. And I've given my time, my blood, one of my internal organs. And if the people of Lyon County decide that, you know, I should jump up here and talk to you guys this morning, as nervous as I am to do so, I'm up for it. I'm not afraid of a challenge. I'm not afraid of a fight. And I'm definitely not afraid to be wrong, to be proven wrong, and I want to be as objective as possible and just serve my county as I can.
That's all I got. Thank you. Appreciate it. Mrs. Hendricks.
Mrs. Hendricks, for the record, first of all, I'd like to thank all of you for the confidence that you've had in me. Six years ago, you appointed me to the Silver Springs Advisory Board. Since then, you appointed me twice to the Planning Commission, and I currently serve as the chair of that. I've been retired for six years. I've chosen to spend my retirement in service to the people of Lyon County. If you attend any of the many public events in Lyon County, there's a strong chance you'll see my husband and I volunteering in some way. I also serve as parliamentarian for the Lyon County Republican Central Committee and the Farley Republican. I'm active in both of those. As you've seen in my resume, I have extensive experience in civil engineering and land surveying and management associated with that. I'm already familiar with Lyon County's code and master plan, and I'm ready to hit the ground running and get some work done. Ask me for your recommendation.
Thank you. So we've heard from the candidates. I don't see that Mr. Baker has come up on Zoom. Am I correct on that observation? Okay, then, as requested, we will move to questions. I think, Mr. Jacobson, you brought that up, so I'll let you go first if you have questions. Well, I figured we'd let the commissioners ask questions, and we will get, get public comment when all the questions are accomplished with the commissioners. Yeah, and that's fine. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. I will reserve any questions for after public comment. But I do want to thank all of our candidates for applying and, and/or being selfish and stepping back. I thought that was impressive. But, but again, I just want to thank our candidates for being willing to step up and, and serve our community members in all of our areas. Thank you, Chairman Hockaday.
Totally agree with you. Commissioner Henderson, did you have any questions, or did you want to wait until after public comment?
I, I'm fine.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Keller, how about yourself? You want to ask questions or wait till public comment?
Wait for, wait for public comment.
Okay, then in that case, we will move on to public comment, and everybody will have three minutes. As I said before, please avoid repeating the same comments. If you agree with a previous speaker, please just state that you agree with the previous speaker or one of the previous speakers. As I said, no personal attacks. Positive comments are always appreciated by the applicants and, of course, the audience. So I know applause or cheering also, and so I would like to have anybody for public comment in chambers to come up, please.
My name is Russ Wright. I live in Dayton. You gentlemen have a difficult task in finding the further, excuse me. I, I spent a week in that formation on the other side of the Sierras, and so I'm still recovering, being back in the free world. I would like to urge you to include Miss Hendricks and Mr. Woolley as two of your candidates. Mr. Woolley was the first one to step up to the first annual Fourth of July Parade in Old Town Dayton. And for three years after that, he furnished his children to carry the banner. He was always first in line, therefore he was first in line at the Fourth of July Parade. Unfortunately, that doesn't happen anymore, but in the girls was probably outgrown carrying the banner. The third candidate is up to you guys. I'm doing it right now.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Clausen, you're coming up.
Brett Clausen, Smith Valley. And to follow your direction, I will simply say I agree with Russ and not to repeat too much. I, I would say that as a new member of the Planning Commission, that I've seen Tammy Hendricks' work and her attention to detail is, is excellent. And I think that will serve both this board and the citizens of Lyon County well. Then I'd also just like to note that the, the motion does use the word recommendation and does use the phrase up to three. So I think Governor Lombardo would be served well by your discernment in, in recommending those that should be recommended. And again, I would agree with Russ, Tammy Hendricks.
Thank you. Anybody else in chambers that would like to get up and speak? I don't see anybody on Zoom. Amanda Bernand. You are unmuted.
Good morning, Amanda Bernand. And first I wanted to say I don't know any of these applicants personally. And from listening, reading their information and listening, I think either Tammy Hendricks or Phil Wool, and Phil Woolery would be two candidates to forward. Tammy, I have sat in on many, many planning meetings, and I have to say she listens. She's very organized and very professional in the planning meetings. And from the question she asked, it's also very obvious that she reads the backup information and the staff reports and, and takes those into consideration in her questions, and I think she would be a good addition to the county commissioners. Phil Woolery, his community service is just exemplary. You know, he gives of himself often, and that's pretty obvious, and that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else on Zoom. No other names, so we will go ahead and proceed with Commissioner comments, questions, whatever you might have. Again, I'll go back to Commissioner Jacobson. If you have something you'd like to question or comment on.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. You know what? I am, I'm good to go. I, I, again, I appreciate everybody that has spoke here. I, I, again, I appreciate everybody that has spoke here today and, and appreciate them willing to step up.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobson. We'll go to Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I'm pretty much good to go too. I do want to say, I do appreciate all the applicants coming up here. I do want to stress that whoever is selected by the governor to when you sit up here, that you sit here with the best interest of Lyon County as your primary objective.
Totally agree. Thank you, Commissioner Keller.
I do want to thank everybody that applied. I appreciate those people that are actually doing community service now. You know, that it's a good fit for what you are doing and I hope you stay doing, you know, actively in that, in that matter if you're not selected. I think I'm, I'm good to go on. I'm going to be voting.
Okay. Thank you for coming in and making your speeches to us. I know sometimes it can be tough to be a public speaker and that's just a part of the job here as a commissioner. You'll be, been getting phone calls and going to meetings and talking up here. So definitely something that we do need to see and we also need to have you work on if, if you do get the job. So at this point, that's the only comments that I have. It sounds like we are ready since we've had commissioners and public comments and we will go into voting. We've lost number, voting for number one, Mr. Pickett pulled himself out. So we will go with applicant in the second order, Gary Gladwell. And I will do a roll call vote. So we will start with Commissioner Keller. Remember, I is to forward, nay is to not forward. Nay. Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Aye.
And myself. I'm going to go with nay. We'll go on to the second, which would be Mr. Baker. I will do a roll call here. We'll go with Mr. Commissioner Jacobson.
Commissioner, or Mr. Baker.
Mr. Baker. Commissioner Keller.
I'm going to go I on that one.
Commissioner Henderson.
Nay.
And I'm a nay. All right, moving on to Mr. Shell. We'll go with Commissioner Keller.
I'm going nay.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Nay.
Looking at Mr. Woolley. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm an I. Thank you for keeping me straight.
That's my job.
Now, Mr. Woolley, yeah, Vice Chair. We'll move on with Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Aye.
Commissioner Keller.
Nay.
And I am an I. Moving on to Tammy Hendricks. Commissioner Keller.
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson.
Nay.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Aye.
And I'm I. So let's go ahead and tally. Of course, we need three out of four to move on.
Have Philip Woolly and Tammy Hendricks. And if you're ready for motion, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Well, we'll see what. Because we have three tied. Actually, two tied, right?
Yes.
Yep, two tied. We'll take a moment, just kind of look over what we're doing here and decide we have Mr. Gladwell and Mr. Shell are tied at the present time, two to two. Okay, we'll move on. I know that we've basically got to decide whether we want to send the two that have three out of four. Or go ahead and try to break the tie between the other two and send three as, I would say, as requested, but not necessarily up to three.
Mr. Chair, I, I would like for us to take another run at Mr. Gladwell and Mr. Shield and see if the votes change.
Okay.
So we can send three.
Okay, your input, Commissioner Jacobson.
Yeah, I, I would go with that. I said, I do agree we did, we should send three. We have skill sets that I think match what, what the definition of a county commissioner should be. And I say we stick with the sending three.
Okay. And Miss, or Commissioner Keller.
I think that we've got the two that are unranked that are tied at the top. I think they're, they're the credible to move forward. That's where I stand. So it's up to the board.
Okay, and I'm going to make my stand is that we should send three. I think if he wanted to, he would have said, you know, send me two. He said up to three. So I think he's looking for the board to send three names. Can't read his mind, but I believe the governor probably wants three names to look at. So having said that, we are going to go back to Mr. Gladwell, Mr. Shell. And we may not be able to break the tie, but we'll try anyway. So looking for Commissioner Jacobson for your vote on Mr. Gladwell.
Yay.
Mr. Keller, or Commissioner Keller.
Nay.
And Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
And I'm going to go nay on this one again until we go through. So got a tie on that. We're going to go back to Mr. Shell. And I'll go ahead and start off with an I and then I'll go to Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Nay.
Commissioner Keller.
Aye.
Okay, so we have our three names. I want to thank Mr. Gladwell for his participation. But we do have the three names going forward. Mr. Shell, Mr. Woolly, and Mrs. Hendricks. Thank you very much, everybody, for your participation in the application process. And
So we, do we need a motion?
We need a mo, yeah, we need a motion now to send those three names forward to the governor. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I moved that we submit the names of Arthur Shell, Tammy Hendricks, and Philip Woolly to Governor Lombardo for his consideration for appointment to our vacant District Three seat.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, I saw Commissioner Jacobson's mouth say aye. Okay, so we have the motion made by Commissioner Henderson and seconded by Commissioner Keller with a four zero vote. And those three names will go forward to the governor. What time is it? Could it be?
Eleven thirty.
Okay. We'll move on to fifteen B presentation only. Update from Lyon County Emergency Manager Taylor Allison on recent storm activities and flooding in Lyon County.
Thank you for the record, Taylor Allison, who is emergency communications manager for Lyon County. Brand new to the position, I just want to say thank you. County manager has been and for the leadership team for giving me a chance to step in and truly hit the ground running.
Swimming.
It's been a, a pretty, pretty busy couple of weeks, first couple of weeks. But I really appreciated the caliber of leadership here at Lyon County. Very commendable and so I'm honored to be a part of this team. Just wanted to give a brief update on where we're at with the flooding situation across the county. Um, I, my heart goes out to the entire community. We have not had a break in these storms since New Year's Eve. We've been hit with several atmospheric rivers. Beginning around the weekend of New Year's Eve, extensive snowfall impacted power outages across the county, left folks isolated to their homes. Our, our county agencies stepped up to help with snow removal. Mr. Holman's team with roads, I mean, everyone has been above and beyond trying to encourage access to services. And this is really what kicked off what now we've been continuing to respond to, which is flooding, primarily alluvial flooding across the county. And so in January, on January ninth roughly, we had a bit of a warmer storm, a warmer atmospheric river causing flooding as that snow melted. And as you heard earlier in the meeting, impacted folks' homes, neighborhoods, roads, you name it. And so our, our community's been really amazing at stepping up and trying to mitigate life safety issues, impacts to property and to contain that incident. Because of that warm atmospheric river on January tenth, as you all heard and mentioned earlier today, we've had a historic rock slide similar to what happened in ninety-seven on Highway Two A, closing that access between Smith Valley and Yurington. And then more recently, we've had this colder atmospheric river with additional snow, just adding to precipitation that we have here in Lyon County. That's kind of the broad timeline, just kind of walking through again. Storm number one, heavy power outages across the region. I mean, Western Nevada got hit pretty hard for up to four days. Some of, and the energy's customers were without power, impacted folks with livestock, being able to water their animals. So Rose Department was doing snow removal. We had warming shelters in Dayton. We promoted the city of Yurington's warming shelter. And then Douglas County had one for Smith and Yurington. Human Services, Shayla Holmes' team coordinated with Central Lion Fire Protection District prior to prioritize snow removal for some of their senior clients that needed to access services. And then Lyon County Sheriff's Search and Rescue supported Healthy Communities Coalition in getting folks boxed meals for homebound that required four-wheel drive to access. Ahead of storm number two, as we mentioned, we worked closely with the Nevada Division of Emergency Management to coordinate NDF crews to fill and place sandbags primarily for Dayton residents and to have sandbags ready as we knew that January ninth warmer rainstorm was going to hit. Special thank you to the search and rescue team, Central Lion. They had trailers and were transporting some of those sandbags to residents and they were very grateful for that. Our county manager personally was knocking on doors to inform residents, potential flooding, especially in the Dayton Valley Ranches area. And our crews were in the fields clearing drainage ditches, culverts, roads, you name it. We did provide media releases to please prepare, stay prepared, including promoting our public sandbag locations. There, NDF did do some social media, so we were able to smack some of those. So when we did get hit with the rainfall, thank you to the Board of County Commissioners for coming together for emergency meeting, emergency declaration. That allows emergency management to access expedited resources if need be. We had a partial emergency operations center activation in Dayton and established a call center phone number, which is still active and will remain active through the end of this week, Friday, close of business, if folks have flooding related issues. Our roads, utilities, facilities departments were out assessing calls for services. They came in deploying sandbags, trying to clear drainage ditches, et cetera. Great, great work in the field on cold, wet days. So amazing, amazing work there. And then Human Services facilitated one voluntary evacuation for a family with access and functional needs. And then we held regular briefings with all of our key partners, including the sheriff's office, fire districts, school district, and others. Our rock slide, this is an atypical event in the sense that the state did do an emergency declaration to access federal highway funds for the cleanup. Senator Titus mentioned, they are working on the procurement process to get the contractors in place. Once they go through their contract negotiations, we'll have a better idea of what the timeline truly is and how long this will be closed. But in the interim, we have a multi-agency coordination of how to continue services for those Smith Valley residents. Some of this, we already spoke to as far as Mason Pass Road, but we are also doing public information for those folks and the broader community as a whole. To this last atmospheric river colder. If you saw or were watching the temperature on Tuesday night, it got down to single digits in some places. So just adding to our precipitation, we're monitoring temperatures. Hopefully it doesn't get too warm too quickly, so our snow doesn't melt too quickly and cause additional flooding. Some areas, we're seeing this modeling of record-setting snowpack. So there's some variability in these, but we rely heavily on the National Weather Service and partners to show us how we're trending in comparison to years like two thousand seventeen when we had flooding in our, in our Chris and Walker rivers. Monitoring those rivers, right now we're well below monitoring flood. But that could change as this snowpack begins to melt, working closely with the irrigation districts and specifically the Walker River Irrigation District to continue to plan on what that looks like as we move into spring thaw. The next steps, monitor that snow runoff and rivers through spring thaw. We do have a significant snowpack. We're going to scale back the emergency operations center. We sent out a media release that that was reduced to monitor and ready status yesterday. But we're keeping that phone number open through Friday. But we're ready to go if anything changes. Continuing to support agencies such as the hospital, South Bay Medical Center with continuity of operations planning while two eight remains closed and doing public information for folks, really encouraging people to keep their sandbags in place or nearby. If we have any changes to our weather, potential for flooding in the future. Keep our briefings, our multi-agency coordination going. And of course, take the lessons learned from this event and update our emergency operations then. So with that, I will take any questions.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome aboard. Nothing like taking a job and all of a sudden having an emergency, right? But, you know, you hit, you hit the ground running, and we certainly appreciate it, and we're glad to have you on board. So, thank you.
Commissioner Keller.
Well, welcome to the team, and I appreciate what you've been doing. This is one department I wish you weren't doing anything, so I hope you have a quieter rest of the year.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Commissioner Hockaday. Kind of baptism by fire. I, I do agree with Commissioner Keller, I wish it was slow-going for you. But again, your efforts are appreciated and welcome aboard. That's all I have, Chairman Hockaday. Thank you, sir.
And the weather report today was for clear the rest of the month, just real cold, so I'm very appreciative of that weather report. Also very appreciative of all the work you've done and getting everything organized and, as, as we said, on the swim right off the bat. Thank you. Okay, going to, I think fifteen C. For presentation only, present, presentation update on Lion County grants, that was requested by Commissioner Henderson, and I see county manager Haskins stand, stepping up.
Thank you. For the record, Andrew Haskin, Lion County manager. Yeah, so Commissioner Henderson had requested that the, actually, I think this was a few meetings ago, an update on Lion County grants that we've received in the last year and kind of where we're going with our our grant program, I guess, CP Now Brands. And so I prepared kind of a brief presentation just to give a very quick overview of it. We could certainly have a discussion about that, because we are open to suggestions. So this is just, this slide here is just a quick summary of the federal grants that we received, federal awards, excuse me, that we received for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. I say federal awards because that number there for Dayton Sewer, that four point six nineteen million. Well, that is a federal award, it is a bond, it's a, it's a debt, so it's subsidized. So we get a really discounted rate on that, but we do have to include that in there. Checked with Control of Full yesterday about that, that, because I was kind of confused on that one, got some clarification. So, you know, if you take that out, Human Services by far brings in the most grants for Lion County, one point nine seven million. That largely goes to support their, their operation, well, that, all of it goes to support their operations. We're really appreciative of Miss Holmes' team, Miss Holmes and her team for bringing those, those dollars into the county. You can see DA slash child support, there's three hundred and twenty thousand that comes in, schools and roads is two hundred and nineteen. That gets split evenly between schools and roads. Just, that's the way the grant program is structured. The Sheriff's Department brought in fifty-one thousand. The airport, that's the Silver Springs Airport for maintenance and projects, that was six hundred and nine thousand last year. Care's funding was two hundred and six thousand, CDPG was two hundred and thirty-four, and I already talked a little bit about the Dayton Sewer FEMA was twenty-nine thousand. The library brought in fifty-nine thousand, and other was a hundred and twenty thousand. I do have more of a breakdown on that later on. I just put together this chart to kind of show visually. So year over year, this shows twenty fiscal year two thousand twenty-one versus fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, and you can see the amounts there. So we were up in most of the categories, some of the categories we didn't have, like in, in two thousand twenty-one, such as the FEMA grant and the Dayton Sewer and the other category. You can see the library brought in significantly more grant funding this year than they did in, in the previous year. And then Human Services, their grants were up twenty-three percent, the child support was up twenty-five percent. Schools and roads was up fourteen percent, and on and on. CDPG was up thirty-six percent as well. So that's really, really good. CDPG stands for Community Development Block. Just for everyone's clarification. So I broke it down by funds that we received by federal agency. So the US Department of Agriculture was pretty significant through the WIC program and through the Schools and Roads Buster. So between those two programs, it was just under five hundred thousand dollars that came into Lion County to support various programs. US Department of Housing and Urban Development. Those, that's where the community development block grants come from, and Energy Solutions Grant Program. That was three hundred and eighty thousand. US Department of Justice for the Bulletproof Best Program and the Regional Game Grant, that was three, thirty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-four. And then the US Department of Transportation was seven hundred and fifty thousand. A large portion of that was that airport improvement program. And then US Department of Treasury, Coronavirus Relief Fund, and coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. Both provided six hundred and fifty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. And then there's a number of different grants, the library saw that, all add up to fifty-nine thousand four hundred and twenty. All right. The funding for the Dayton Sewer project through those, that came through the state revolving loan fund, but it originated from the US Environmental Protection Agency. So the state revolving loan fund is kind of a pass-through agency on that, and then we received just about twelve hundred bucks from the US Election Assistance Commission and disaster grants from FEMA under the Department of Homeland Security, twenty thousand. Human Services takes up, US Department of Health and Human Services takes up a couple of pages, and you can see there are many different grant programs that our Human Services Department works with on works with on those, so, and applies for those grants. Like I said before, they do a great job bringing in dollars to support programs. And that total is one point four two million dollars. So moving forward, I just kind of want to talk about ways that we can better position ourselves to get more grant funding. Obviously, just because you write a grant doesn't mean you're going to get it. So there's things that we can do as a county to improve our chances. So first off, I want to work with each department to identify new grant opportunities to fund projects. County has a policy, so we don't, we try not to fund positions with grant funding. We try and fund the, fund other projects and programs with that grant fund. Just because grant funding tends to be unstable, can be unstable, so you don't want, don't want to fund positions that could be could be volatile. We want to better position the county to meet grant requirements by completing preliminary work. So a good example of this would be the second bridge in Dayton. We couldn't just go out today, apply for a grant to build that bridge. We would really have to go through all the engineering and everything on that, make sure all the geotech work is done. Make sure that we have all that stuff nailed down before we can apply for a grant to get that built. Now, sometimes there are grants available for planning, for engineering, for that kind of stuff. So it's possible that we can actually use grant funding to do that. In fact, I believe we've identified some funding for the engineering work on the bridge. But doing more of those types of projects, trying to leverage those funds into bigger grants, I think is going to be helpful in the future. Same with, with different road projects, we want to make sure that some of the engineering, and I know the board authorized out of some of the grant funding that we got last year through the, I think it was ARPA to do some engineering work on some of the road projects, so that we can begin to apply for grants to to complete those. Next thing is identify funding mechanisms for grant match funds, so I'll take the drainage improvements from the south area drainage master plan in Dayton. If we were to build that hundred million dollar drainage facility, if we were to get a grant for it, that hundred million dollar grant, typically there's a twenty percent match or a ten percent match, depending on the grant. So the county would have to come up with ten or twenty million dollars to do that. There are other programs. I know the state has a program for helping with match, but also working, you know, just within the county budget to try to maybe set aside funds for that match. Just to make sure that we're, we're able to, to execute on those grants if we were to get them. I, something I want to, want to explore is a possibility of working with a contract grants writer. I'm not sure that we are at a place now where we need a full-time grants writer. I, I don't know, that's, that's a discussion that we can have. But I think identifying somebody that we can work with on a contract basis when we identify grants would be helpful. So anybody that has any experience with grants or grant writing knows that it's, it's a whole different language and it's very specialized. And your success in getting that grant is based on your ability to, whoever's writing that grant to, to speak that language. Some of the stuff that they put in those applications are pretty amazing. So you, it's things that, that you wouldn't think of. I have some experience managing grants through my previous career. And looking at the applications and what a grant writer comes up with, it's just amazing. But that's what, what's, what gets you those grants, is kind of being creative there and speaking nothing. So that's something that I want to take a look at and consider in the future. And then working closely with our congressional delegation, I think that's key. There's some grants that are direct appropriations, there are some grants that grant programs where they, they specify specific projects, that some of that money has to go to. And so working with our delegations to try and better our chances there, I think would be helpful. A couple of grants to explore, and this is, by, obviously by no means a, an exhaustive list. This is just kind of some of the things that I, I came up with off the top of my head, but rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity, the RACE grants, that's the DOT grant that replaced the Build and Tiger Grants. So that can be used for road, rail, transit, or port projects. I want to say the city firmly, I think that's the type of grant that they got. I don't know if, what it was called when they got it. But I know they, they had applied for some grant funding for that second bridge across I'm spacing on the name of the, the road, but that connects with Highway fifty. So anyway, I, I want to say that that was the type of grant that they looked at for that. FEMA hazardous mitigation grants, I think are important. Again, those funds could probably be used for some of the drainage projects that we've got going on, or that we, that we would like to have going on. With the hazardous mitigation grants, I know there is a little bit of an issue there, because we, Nevada tends to score a little bit lower, because we don't have a statewide building code, and that is one of the criteria there. But it's something to look into, and I think if we can score high enough in other areas, that, that might be an opportunity. And then Federal Lands Access Program, that can be used to improve transportation facilities that provide access to or are adjacent to or located within federal lands. Lion County is over seventy percent federal lands. So there might be some good opportunities there for funding some transportation projects. I realize these ones are kind of transportation-related, but I know that that's a big need that we have. And certainly by no means the only type of grants that we would be taking a look at in the future. Like I said, those are kind of the ones that I'm familiar with, previous experience. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Commissioners, you brought it up. Commissioner Henderson, first one for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Haskin, for the presentation. I'm happy to see we got as, we're getting as much as we did. However, I don't think we're getting enough. You know, I read in the newspapers and online and stuff about neighboring counties and, and other local governments in the state getting a heck of a lot more money than we do. And I appreciate us taking the time to start this discussion and focus on that. I understand that the, the match cost, I, I wish, I wish all, all federal matches were, follow the FAA model, which is ninety-five percent with a five percent match. It's, it's amazing, but they're not all like that. I am kind of curious. I'm sure Mr. Foley could, could get this information. How much does it cost us to administer the grants that we get? Because every time you get a grant, there's reporting requirements, and there's a cost involved. It's not just, here's a ton of money, go play with it. I, I do strongly support the idea of some type of grants administrator. I, I understand that we might not need a, a full-time employee right now. I'm certainly open to a contract basis. I have no idea if it's legal to do that on a contingency basis or not, where they get paid more, if they get it, if they're successful in the grant, but sure Mr. Wright could research that for us. Cause I, I think what we need to work better at is identifying what grants are out there and, and how to apply for them. And I appreciate your comment on how do we come up with the matching funds. You know, that, that, that's, that's a very good com- comment. But I, I think that whatever money that we spend on the grants administrator, we're going to get back more, more, I don't know how much more, but we'll, we will get much more than that back. And I, I know at one point, I don't, don't know if she still does or not. But actually, it was Senator Reed, Senator Reed used to send out an email like every week with grant opportunities available. I don't know if any of our delegation is doing that now. We have another item to talk about our delegation. And I, but I appreciate you putting that comment on your slide to work close, more closely with our delegation, because I think that's something that we sorely need. And I'll address that in the, the next agenda item. But that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Commissioner Keller.
Well, I'd have to agree with you that to work toward getting a grant writer. On the RACE FEMA and FLAP, that group, can those all three, can you can get assistance from all three at the same time? For like those are the one, one or the other. So I'm looking at the bridge.
I, I have to go back and look at the specifics and notice the funding opportunities for those. Every program's different, so sometimes it can be combined, sometimes it can. Sometimes you can do staged projects where, you know, you complete stage one, then you can apply for a grant for stage two, they were phase two, I mean, based projects. So that's something that, that that we can take a look at too. I know some of the FEMA grants are that way, where you can do phases. I, I just don't have an answer off the top of my head.
Okay, Commissioner Henderson said that he's going to be bringing up the delegation in the next agenda item, so I'm going to wait.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Hockaday. The Nevada Pacific Park, just from the information that I feel I could speak on a little bit, the Parkway Bridge is already there off of I-80. It's actually the overpass over the railroad connecting it to fifty. That's, that's the big ticket item there. And as far as the grant writer, I, I, I'm very cautious right now with inflation and, and possible recession and whatever there, and since we don't have, or at least I don't believe we have our projected revenues. Caught very cautious about adding more personnel right now. But it is my understanding that if we do contract a grant writer just per grant, that a lot of times they will write their, their costs. just per grant, that a lot of times they will write their, their cost into the grant and that would not cost the, the county any money upon success of that, receiving that. I may be wrong. But again, I, I, it's, it is very impressive what some of our departments have brought in for grant monies for the year, especially human services under Ms. Holmes. Just highlight that. Well done. But again, at this time, I'm obviously just leery about hiring on more personnel, but, but there are a lot of grants out there and the matching funds is obviously where, where the rubber hits the road for our county. So just appreciate the, the presentation and thank you, Chairman Hockaday.
Commissioner Jacobson, I certainly agree with just about everything you said there. Definitely we need to keep on the grants. I don't know if we have someone leafing through since Harry Reid quit doing something like that, but leafing through to see what's available out there because if you don't look, you don't know. I do know that when I wrote a grant for volunteer fire department, I got a quarter of a million dollars. When I, when they called to advise me that we received the money, they said, could you use another 50,000? Cause we got extra money. I said, sure. So you know, those, those options are out there if we know where to go look. So that might be something that we do sometime, sit down and look through all the stuff that's out there. Cause I, I know a couple of months ago, they brought up $65 billion for road over the next 10 years and road, road projects. And those are the things we need to jump into rather than ignore. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Good presentation. And we'll say, do we have any public comment that would like to say anything about grants? Just, okay. Then we'll move on with 15D for possible action discussion on lobbyist presentation, representation at the federal level and direct the county manager to research options for representation. This also is requested by Commissioner Henderson. You're on, Commissioner Henderson.
Do you want to lead, lead us off?
Sure. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the genesis for, for this agenda item came when I, I asked, who's representing Lyon County in Washington DC? And the answer is nobody. Now, and, and that is a big oversight, I think on our part. We need to have someone, I think, my opinion, that we need to have someone in, in Washington that, that has constant contact with our delegation and a, as I've said before, I'm, I'm frustrated at the, the lack of direct funds that we get through our delegation. And I think that is due in part because we don't have a good relationship with them. And we need to, to, to work on that. But I also think we need someone in DC that can remind them, can remind our delegation, hey, you know, we got this, we got this, we need the second bridge in, in Dayton, we need a road network. Because the federal, there isn't funds available. We're just not getting them. So I, I would like for us to direct the county manager to explore some possibilities for representation in DC. I know there are a couple of firms that represent a lot of Nevada wolf governments. The Porter Group is one of those. It's headed up by a former congressman, John Porter. And then, and I'm going blank on the other one that Nye County uses. I can't think of the, the name of that. There's, there are a couple of firms out there that are familiar with, with Nevada and have good relationships with our congressional delegation. I think we need to explore, you know, what, what it would take for us to get representation at the DC level. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. How about Commissioner Jacobson? Do you have any comments on item 15D?
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. Well, I would like to thank our senators and House of Representative members would be fighting for all of the state of Nevada and not just Vegas and Reno. Har har. But, but again, I would be curious as to what that might look like from a local level on the na- to the national level.
Okay. Commissioner Keller, Cummings?
Yeah. I don't know. I, I mean, I'd need more information on the whole thing. That, I think that's what it's up here for. Because I don't know if we're going to get a return on investment for what little Lyon County could afford, because I don't think we're, our pocketbooks are big. If we're actually going to get what we would like to get done at the federal level, I do reach out to the political side and talk to, and I think that's where we're going to Washington DC to do. Actually talk to staff and, and see if we can reach out and what kind of programs and at least get on their radar. So we can get that information as they get it, especially if they're the ones that are champion certain items. Last year, when I met with Senator Masto here, she said she was very interested. I, I brought up parks and trying to get lighting in the parks. And she said she was very interested in anything that promoted youth activities in the roles and that I haven't heard anything back. So I will question her when we see her again. But to me, that's where, where we, we definitely have to at least go that avenue.
Thank you, Commissioner Keller. My comments would be that I see no problem with going forward and getting information on this and see how cost effective it might be. Certainly worth a try to look and see what other counties in Nevada are doing and what the options are for us in the future. Cause certainly if we can get more money than we have to spend on doing it, that's always a plus. So that's where I'm coming from on this. Do we have any public comment on this item? Doesn't, nope, we do. Mr. Turner. Mr. Turner, go ahead.
Oh, sorry about that. Can you hear, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I, representation at the, at the state level, I'm sorry, the federal level, in my opinion, is, is always a good thing, but the challenge is how to do it, you know, with, with facing the reality of economics. And I've been on a number of advisory boards for state agencies and we partnered with national organizations. So maybe it's the National Association of Counties or something like that. The only other thing I would say is that, you know, you, you, you can't just be asking, you got to give something. And what you give is you give your representatives information on how what they've done has helped the constituents in your county. And that, that's their motivation because that's the, that's the, the currency of politics. And if you do that, partnering with another, a national organization, you can get some really good results, or at least that's my experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we direct the county manager to research options for representation at the federal level.
I'll second that.
Oh, I'd like to discuss on the motion itself. Because I, I wanted to get a realistic idea of your workload and what's going forward of when we could expect any anything to come if we're directing you to do something. Well, how soon? I don't want to expect it next week or whatever. I wanted you to be realistic and give us that information.
Sure. Andrew asking county manager for the record. I, that's a good question. So I know we've got some travel coming up and whatnot. I would say probably month, month and a half, I could get something, something together, at least kind of figure out in terms of ballpark price, what we would be looking at.
Okay.
You made the motion, is that?
That's fine.
Timeframe is acceptable. And now we have Mr. Foley.
Just, just to comment on that, if I may, Mr. Chair, and, and I think, you know, the timing on this is, is it works out because we will be able to have some of those, some of those exploratory meetings when we're back in DC. Well, and, and then obviously after we get back from that, then, so yeah, so you know, six weeks, two, two months, something like that.
Yeah, I think so.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Council for the record, it, it's not directly related to the motion, but I think a good process would be is to figure out exactly what we want to ask for when we go back to, to the federal delegation. Because if we're just spending money to have federal representation, we probably should give them things to lobby on.
Oh, absolutely.
Everything.
Good input. So we have a motion and a second. And I will call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Do we do public comment?
Yeah. Kind of we followed that public comment with more comment.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, yep.
Short term, I lost.
I've always got that. Okay. So we're good on that one. We have four O on the vote. 15E possible action, approve a three-year employment agreement with Andrew Haskin to serve as county manager. We have an employment agreement and the Haskin OML notice. Do you have any questions about this? And I'm going to ask for Mr. Haskin, he's up there. He wants to say something. That's fine with me. Go for it.
Andrew Haskin, county manager for the record. Yep. That, that you'll probably recognize this employment agreement. It's very similar to the one that the previous county manager had. There was some sections that we clarified in there, but and obviously the amounts are different, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Henderson, question?
Just one. Are you sure you want the job?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Keller.
No, I'm good.
Commissioner Jacobson.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Hockaday and Mr. Haskins. I, all right, I think, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. With the audio, we had trouble with last, last meeting. I'm glad that we're taking these precautions. So thank you for that. Just a, a couple of things. One, I, I really value our department heads and what solidified Mr. Haskins for me was the day-to-day folks that he deals with. When, when those department heads stood up and, and spoke to the job that Andrew has done as, as the interim county commissioner. What we see on a bi-weekly basis and is not as important to me as what those department heads see on a daily basis. And so when those department heads stood up and spoke fondly of the work, the communication skills, the work ethic and the integrity of Mr. Haskins, that holds far more weight than what we see bi-weekly. So I am fully in support of Mr. Haskins. Looking through the contract, it's really the, the going rate. And I, I am in full support of Mr. Haskins. So thank you, Chairman Hockaday.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson, you had another question?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Commissioner Jacobson brought up the, the salary is, are you good with that? The salary is, how's that compared to, you know, summer-sized counties and?
Sure. So when I was preparing for this, after the last meeting, I took a look at when I, what the former county manager was making and what some of the surrounding county managers were making as well. So there's a little bit of a difference and that I think I'm probably the only one that actually pays for part of my, my retirement. So everyone else, it's employer paid only. I am employer employee paid. So there's a little bit of a translation there, but I did the math. So the former county manager here in Lyon County was making 167, 167,070. That was employer paid only. So that would translate to 193, 153 with employer employed. Carson City, and this was as of 2020, and there is an annual increase built into that contract. But as of the, the beginning of her contract, it was 190,500, which would translate to 220, 218. And then Douglas County was 208, 333. At the, the last time I, I was able to find the information. So I, I believe that was at the beginning of the last contract period, which would translate to 240, 832. I have other information on St. Story and Churchill, but they're smaller counties, so.
Thank you, thank you. Just curious about that. Cause I, I miss, I, I would personally like to bump that 185 up. So, but we will see.
Yeah, I, I would think that that would me, mean a change in contract and also a new agenda item and not sure how, I think we'd have to ask the the district attorney.
Yes.
Chair, Chairman Hockaday?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Jacobson.
I am for just staying status quo. If Mr. Haskins is fine with one, this current contract, I believe that there's built-in raises and whatnot, but I would, I would have to say that I'm, I will be voting for this with a yay.
Okay. Commissioner Keller.
I'm going to do the same as what Rob just said. I think you negotiated, you, you figured out what you wanted, what you were going to move forward with. So I'm just going to say yay to it. We'll come to a vote, yeah, what it stands.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that they, you know, for possible future reference, I, I think we're probably good with the agenda item, but if there was a change in contract such as this, what would we be looking at for re-agendize? How would, how would that work for situations such as just brought up?
Steve Wright, District Attorney, I would think in this instance, it would be re-agendized. Because it's an improvement agreement, not set compensation. So implied in that, you would be approving the agreement that's before the board. If it was an amount less, I'd be more comfortable with you moving forward, but increasing that would require a new agenda item.
Copy that. Thank you. All right. So public comment. Anything on Zoom? Doesn't look like any public comment in-house or on Zoom. So I'm looking for a motion on this.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a three-year employment contract with Andrew Haskin to serve as county manager.
I have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Keller. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Have anybody opposed, say nay? We have a four zero count on the vote, so we'll move on.
Congratulations.
Yep. Congratulations to our county manager, no longer interim. 15F for possible action discussion, provide direction to the county manager to work with the US Forest Service regarding a possible merger of the land, or the land, the Lyon and Mineral County Resource Advisory Committee with the Northern Nevada Resource Advisory Committee requested by Commissioner Henderson on this also. Go ahead, Commissioner Henderson, since this is yours, you can tell us what you want to address.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There has been in, in existence for a number of years, a Lyon Mineral County Resource Advisory Committee for the US Forest Service. This committee makes recommendations on allocating funds received under Secure Rule Schools Program. I served as the chair of that committee for a number of years. The committee has, hasn't met for a, a couple of years because they can't get a quorum. The committee has, hasn't met for a, a couple of years because they can't get a quorum. So the Forest Service has reached out to us about combining the, the Lyon Mineral County Rack with the Northern Nevada Resource Advisory Committee. Uh, Megan, I can't think of her last name right now. Ma- Megan Maloney from the uh, Forest Service was gonna be here, but she has other meetings. So she sent me, so I, I want to read some information about this to, to be more, more clear than what I can rumble on. So it takes a quorum of eight members. Must exist for the, for the recreational rack to hold an official meeting. Lyon County currently has just over a hundred and nine thousand dollars available in funding. Mineral County has just over a hundred and thirty two thousand in funding. The Lyon Mineral Rack has struggled in the last few years to secure a quorum of members to, in order to activate the rack. As a result, we're unable to expend any of the funds collected from sure, excuse me, Secure Rural Schools and Title II. The Forest Service has managed to get an agree, get an extension with the federal government these few years on the funding. Eventually, the rack process will no longer allow for extensions and we will lose all that funding to the general, general treasury. There's a deadline next week for the Forest Service to submit a merger request to merge the Lyon Mineral Rack with the rural Nevada Rack, which is Elko, Ely and, and some other counties. The particular act net never lacks a quorum. So anyway, bottom line is we combine these two racks, we're not going to be losing some, some public funds. And, uh, it certainly makes sense because I hate giving money back to the federal government.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Haskin?
Yeah, um, I, Andrew Haskin for the record, County Manager. So I can provide a little bit more information on, um, the types of projects that, um, we're talking about if that would be helpful. Um, the types of projects include improvement of existing infrastructure maintenance, implementing, implementation of stewardship objectives that enhance forest ecosystems, restoration and improvement of land health and water quality. Projects must comply with all, um, applicable federal, uh, laws and regulations. Can be used for, um, road trail, infrastructure maintenance or obliteration, soil productivity improvement, forest ecosystem health improvements, watershed restoration and maintenance, wildlife and fish habitat restoration, maintenance and improvement, noxious and exotic weeds control and, um, native species reestablishment. At least fifty percent of the funds are to be used for projects that are, um, primarily dedicated to road maintenance, decommissioning or obliteration or to restoration of streams and watersheds. And of course, all those, um, projects have to directly benefit the U S Forest. So, um, I'm happy to answer your question.
Uh, thank you. Um, Commissioner Keller, I think you want to say something?
Well, I wanted to clarify, uh, if you could, uh, who is the Northern Nevada Resource Advisory Committee? Uh, what's the makeup?
The committee itself?
Yes, which counties?
Which counties? Um, do you want?
I, I'll just say that, uh, well over a year ago, I was picked to be on the Rack, uh, Resource Advisory Committee. And, uh, I had never heard anything about it. The first phone call, they talked about the merger and I said, absolutely. I'm pretty sure that if we can't have a quorum with what we're doing, then let's move on. And so at that point, I kind of expected more contact, meetings, whatever we're gonna do, and it never happened. Uh, I did reach out to my contact, uh, who happened to be the interim superintendent at the time and never received a phone call back. So obviously, uh, there is some communication process that needs to be accomplished and hopefully we can merge. I mean, that's what I'd like us to, to do so that we can get the money.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I can make a, a comment on that. There has been some turnover at, at the Forest Service. In fact, um, Ms. Malaney, Maloney, who, who, she, she used to be in, in Bridgeport and she went somewhere else for a couple of years and she just came back and she's going, what happened to my rack?
Yeah.
You know, so, so I think we have people in place at the Forest Service now that hope that communication problem will go away.
Yeah.
To answer Commissioner Keller's, um, question about the which counties are on that committee currently, um, I believe it's Nye, um, New Rico, Lander, Humboldt, and Mikey.
I think that's it.
Is that it?
Yeah, I, I was just making sure that everybody knew that that was the one that, uh, Loretta Wickman's the chair of right now. Uh, it, it is Nye County and it was confusion before because Nye County to me is central Nevada, but it's actually part of the northern, uh, thing. And, uh, I believe, uh, Megan was in Montana. So.
And, um, I did speak to Loretta, um, Wickman this morning, um, actually before the meeting. And so, um, she told me that they tried to do as a board is try to keep the funds that are allocated from, or to a county in that county for projects and.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I, if I had to comment on that, yeah, what, what the process would be is the, the two racks together would have to form a, a charter. And that's one thing that we would make sure is in the charter that the money generated for Lyon County is spent for projects in Lyon County.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Jacobson? Any comments?
Um, none at this time, Chairman Hockaday. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Keller?
Uh, so moving forward with this, then we, when we make applications, it's gotta be approved by the federal government before it moves forward.
I believe so. I'm, I'm, to be honest, I'm not entirely sure of the, the process completely. Um, and so, so the agenda item will, um, direct me to start working through that process with the U S Forest Service. Um, I, I believe that the, the federal government does have to.
I, 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 excuse me, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I believe it has to go through the Secretary of the Department of Agriculture. And, and the Forest Service does have a deadline of next week to submit a merger request for these two racks. Otherwise, it'd be another year and we would probably lose some funds.
And, and I do apologize for, um, th- this item was kind of rushed. We got it on there on the agenda, like probably an hour before we posted it. Um, because of the time constraint on it, that we had looked at even trying to, to push it to the next meeting so I could do some more research and we just didn't have enough time. So, um, I do apologize.
No apology necessary because it was, uh, you know, rushed and it's kind of been sitting on a back burner for a long time as we discussed. Uh, yes, I, I do agree that we need to move forward with this, uh, with the merger, get it done, get these, this group back together and take care of spending some of that money on some projects. Um, public comment, any public comment? I don't see any Zoom, nobody in chambers, uh, at that point then, uh, guess I'll look for a motion to direct county manager. Would you like to do that?
Sure. Mr. Chair, I move that we uh, direct the county manager to work with the United States Forest Service regarding a possible merger of the Lyon and Mineral County Resource Advisory Committee with the Northern Nevada Resource Advisory Committee.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Keller. Uh, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so we got a four zero vote on item fifteen F. Okay. Um, and we're getting close to twelve thirty, but we only have one more presentation. So we'll, we'll go ahead and press on if that's okay with the other commissioners.
Absolutely.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, sixteen A for presentation only, projects update by the utilities engineer, Kishore Panda, uh, from utilities department project updates for January twenty twenty three. Uh, Mr. Panda?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, for the record, Kishore Panda, utilities engineer. Um, first of all, I apologize for not being able to be there in the chamber for this presentation. Um, I have all the informations in my slides, but I'll go quickly. I know it's going through the lunch time. Um, uh, can anybody help to put the presentation on the screen? Um,
um, Mr. Panda, we didn't receive your presentation in advance and we can't share the screen. I might ask for a quick break if you could send it to, um, to Aaron, unless it's backup material. Okay. Just give it one second.
Okay. I believe it's in the agenda link that can be pulled, I think.
Yeah, that's good.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much. Uh, well, I have my hard copies. I could have gone that way, but, uh, I think it will help. Um, well, um, this is an update since we presented, uh, the project starters in November last year. So basically right now we have, uh, nine projects. Uh, eight are in different stages. One we completed in the last month, uh, last November. So in summary, there are four projects in the planning. And, um, we moved two of the previous projects which are in the design to construction. So, uh, we are going to have four capital projects worth of forty million dollar in construction in next, uh, couple of years. So I think we're entering into a lot of construction activities with the utility department. And, uh, so far the teamwork and the support from the staff and the leadership from Mr. Brooketa is, is amazing and hopefully we'll go through this phase and, uh, complete this construction, uh, without much of hiccup in the project. Um, next, uh, slides provides information on each project. I'll probably go quickly. Um, could you please move to the next one? So this is a highway project, uh, sewer project along Highway fifty corridor. Uh, again, a quick summary, we have been working with the two owners. Uh, good news is we are successful in getting a permanent easement from one of the owners, the Central Gas Station. Uh, unfortunately, we can get the temporary easement for doing the construction. So we'll see how we can manage the construction within the twenty feet, uh, permanent easement we have been allo- allowed to get from this owner. Uh, we are also working with the other owner on the other side of Dayton Valley Road. Um, right now we are going through some appraisal process to, to find out uh, if we can have some, uh, temporary construction easement that the owner would desire for, uh, this easement request. Um, so that's a quick summary on this project. As soon as we are getting the easement, we'll move this project to the design and just for you to know, this is one of the critical asset that, uh, that is in a very bad shape. So we hope don't happen this one, but we can expect any emergency condition in this line anytime. Uh, next slide please. Um, this is a sewer model development. Again, this is a engineering, um, uh, evaluation and, uh, programming for the hydraulic model development. So we are expecting the model soon. So um, hopefully by, within a month or so, we'll get the model running and operating and operation staff will get benefit out of this, uh, uh, project. Next slide please. Um, Silver Spring preliminary, um, report, engineering report for affluent disposal. Again, this is an engineering study we have been doing. So hopefully we'll bring a outcome of this project to the board soon. Uh, next slide please. Uh, Ship Camp Dam, uh, since we reported last November, there has been no work done, but we'll see how we can uh, basically take care of the poor condition of the dam, which the Department of Water Resource has stormed as a high hazard dam. So we'll see how this can be mitigated and, uh, and corrected. Uh, next slide please. Um, so next four projects, I'm going to tell they're all under construction. This is, um, uh, lift station two project. Uh, this has been under construction since November of twenty twenty one. Um, in October, we had some interruption due to, uh, due to some supply issues. Some of the components was not there. So good news is that within a month, we got the supplies and the construction resumed in November. At this point, the construction is going to end by July of this year. Um, next slide please. Um, this is the second one in under construction, uh, is the Aspen Creek Rapid Infiltration Basin. This is basically to provide a hundred percent affluent disposal for the, for the sewer side. Um, we began construction in May. Um, I'm sorry, we, we began construction in October and this is going as per the schedule with a construction schedule of seven months. Um, as per the contract, we should finish this by May of this year. But lately we are hearing some, again, the supply issues, uh, affecting some of the delivery items from electrical and controls. So we, we're expecting some delay in this project, uh, at this time. Next slide please. Um, ten mile hill water tank. It was in the design when we reported last month, uh, last time, um, the, we advertised this project, uh, with a estimated cost of over seven million dollars. Uh, we opened the bid, uh, this January seventeenth, this, um, this week. Um, we are going to have the recommendation later from engineers and, uh, will be bringing to board's consideration in the next meeting in February. Um, it's a short span project within seven months. We can wrap up the construction by November of this year. Next slide please. Uh, this is the Rulinga Plant Expansion. So we have been waiting for at least, uh, close to over a year because of the reef construction project, uh, not kind of progressing towards the end. So with the construction of the reef going well, we moved these projects to advertisement. So, um, January ninth, we posted this advertisement. So right now the project is in the market. The bid is going to be open in next month on twenty third. Um, we are going to bring the recommended contractor to board's, uh, consideration in the first, uh, second meeting of March. Uh, it's a twenty months project, uh, with a cost of about twenty one million dollar. Um, with engineers estimate of twenty one million dollar. Um, tentative completion is February of twenty twenty five. So this four projects will keep the staff busy and, uh, we are going to a heavy construction phase in next couple of years. Uh, next slide please. Um, this is one, this was a engineering evaluation of the recent waterman break, as you know, uh, near the Copper Canyon or the River Park Elementary School. So our consultant basically finished the evaluation of this failure. They submitted the report in November, uh, two of the key findings of this study uh, was, uh, recommended twenty nine hundred feet of water pipe to be replaced with an estimator cost of about one point nine two million dollar. Um, and the other key, key aspect of this finding that we cannot connect any new development sewer connections until we, until we fix this line. So, um, I think we are planning to have this project. We'll bring this to board's consideration and discussion maybe, uh, pretty soon on this project. So that's all, all I got. I'm, I'm sorry, um, for not being there, but I'll be happy to answer if any questions to there. Thank you.
Any questions? Commissioner Keller? Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Panda? The, the pipe that needs replacing that twenty nine hundred feet, how old is that?
Um.
I, I see Mr. Brooketa getting up to bail you out.
Yeah, I think he can keep some update on that pipe.
Commissioners, uh, dated, forget it for the record, that pipe is about fifteen to twenty years old. Um, one of the things that, uh, we'll be bringing this forth as a request for next fiscal year's budget. We will addition, well, we will request some additional piping and associated with it. Um, when Far West did their engineering, they had some limitations in what they could, you know, say from an engineering standpoint, but more that pipe does need to be replaced. So there's a much bigger component to that, but, uh, our. but more that pipe does need to be replaced. So there's a much bigger component to that, but our plan would be over the next three years to replace approximately thirty five hundred linear feet of pipe associated with that. We are working with the development community right now to let them know it is holding up some of the development community from moving forward. But you know, the the options and we just had a meeting with them yesterday is, you know, that they would step forward on a reimbursement agreement and do part of that as part of their development. But with the tight economy and what's happening with housing, that may or may not happen, but we're working closely with them and have regular meetings.
Okay.
Josh Floyd, Lyon County Council for the record, this is a batch of pipe that we have known for many years has been faulty. There was a class action lawsuit. The Lyon County joined on too many years ago. We received the settlement funds, but those into the water, Dayton Water Fund. It was a few hundred thousand, definitely not enough to take care of everything, but the amount that we were able to get out of the class action lawsuits. So we have no further recourse. We just have to go out.
You answered my second question. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobson. Do you have any questions? No.
Chairman Hockaday, none at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions either. Thank you, Mr. Panda, for an excellent update. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So we'll move on to agenda requests. None. Commissioner Henderson?
Not at this point.
Commissioner Jacobson. Any agenda requests?
Yeah, Chairman Hockaday, thank you. It's not for necessarily next meeting, but I did receive a phone call from a resident of Stagecoach with concerns about the Stagecoach, the old Stagecoach Fire Department. And I'll maybe be asking for some information from that and and it may be a a possible future agenda item, but not necessarily for next month. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I will be discussing with Mr. Haskin some covert issues and Lyon County website issues. We'll figure out when that can go on the agenda. It'll be in the future, but I'll talk to you about that shortly. Moving to number eighteen, Commissioner comments. Do we have any final Commissioner comments about Commissioner Keller? I see your hand moving there.
So earlier I thanked some people and I apparently I missed some people to thank because I didn't know they were actually active at the time because Doug Homestead's crew went out there and helped and so did Dave Burkettas and I went and thought water would help in a flood, a water department, but but apparently they do. So thank you very much for for doing that. I didn't make the connection, but but Mr. Holman did that. And I did attend Silver Springs Advisory Board Meeting. I was hoping they're they're later on the agenda than our first public comments. I was hoping someone from there would come forward and talk. So I didn't want to steal their thunder, but they do have a new board, the three new members. And they're they're just getting active. They have some requirements to do and they're all new. So hopefully they'll they'll bring it all up to speed. And we do have over ninety two thousand acre feet of water in the lake right now. So it looks like we're going to have a good summer. And we'll at least get the lake full.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I do, I just want, Mr. Burketa, I want to add my emissions to to your crew. Thank you, guys. I know you guys were out there working. Also, I want to thank everybody again that that applied for the for the County Commission position. I look forward to working with whoever the the governor chooses. And for everybody out there, I encourage you, if you prefer one candidate over another, email the governor, let him know. That's it.
Commissioner Jacobson, any final comment then?
Yeah, Chairman Hockaday echo Mr. Keller's, Commissioner Keller's comments and Commissioner Henderson's as well to to all those staff. And even just like keeping storm drains going and and all that stuff throughout this. And then to the residents. And I know you you lost sleep over this and with the with flooding concerns and and hopefully this next stretch of weather gives us a little bit of retrieve to catch up, drain down, fill up that reservoir a little bit more and prepare for the spring thaw. So thank you, Chairman Hockaday, and I wish everyone a safe trip home.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobson. Same here, everybody have a safe trip home. I know the roads are icy. The people out there driving like crazy. Took me two and a half hours to get here this morning from Smith Valley and there are a lot of slick roads and drivers out there that think they can safe safely stay two feet off your rear bumper on ice. But other than that, we do not have a closed session again today, I would imagine. And so we'll get into public participation. We won't be taking any action on any item until it's properly agendized, but it is anticipated the public participation will be held this time. Though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda, citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after a discussion of each agenda item, action item, and before the board takes any action. Do I have any? I do. I have some public comment here from Mr. Wright. You're on, sir.
I'm still Russ Wright. I still live in Dayton. Wasn't on the agenda, but I would like to command and applaud this board. Specifically Commissioner or Chairman Hockaday for what appears to be a new commission protocol. And that is one of inclusion in that the public comment section is now before motions and seconds. So it appears that the public comment is a little more important than it has been in the past. And as somebody who's sat on commissions like this, I applaud you for this with protocol.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other? It looks like we have Mr. Turner. We'll hit Mr. Turner first.
Okay, let's see. Okay, well, thank you, Chairman Hockaday. John Turner, Smith Valley. With a brief view from the trenches here. You know, I feel like the county keeping Mason Pass Road passable is really important because people are going to try, you know, people are just going to do that regardless of the position unless you put up a barricade. An interesting question that comes up is with all this talk about a mine in that area, what would happen to this resource of Mason Pass Road if that land were privatized? Would we lose access to it or would the road be improved? I don't know, but it's an interesting question. As Mr. Pickett said earlier, there is seven seven five off-road and recovery, which is a five oh one C three that helps motorists in stuck situations like that. The number is seven seven five two three eight three seven nine three. And there are several trained volunteers and members of that organization in Smith Valley, and I happen to be one of those. There was a comment about the the road closure signs. What I've heard from people, you know, I know it's not accurate. Well, people say, well, you know, the county puts up those road closed signs, not because it's closed, but because they don't want liability if somebody goes past them. So I don't know how you address that, but that's the perception that I hear. In terms of communications during the power failures and everything and the the rockslide, Yarrington, Mason Valley Fire Production District did a great job. They were, they ended up being the best resource for us in Smith Valley to to really figure out what was going on 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 two oh eight. And then also East Fort Fire Protection District, which I understand is Douglas County. But they opened up a warming station in TRE, which was really the only resource that we had from Smith Valley. I did hear some frustration from Smith Valley residents that they felt like maybe we should have resources and not have to rely on Douglas County. Hopefully that's something that our new county emergency manager can work with us on. Finally, concern about local businesses impacted by a month's long closure on two oh eight. The Buckboard Station in particular, they've reported a dramatic fall off in their business. And it's the only gas station in Smith Valley and an important community resource. And so if there's a way that we can support that, I think it would be worth some discussion at some point. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Turner. And it looks like Stagecoach GID. Stagecoach GID, I see a hand. You are.
Okay, there we go. Sorry about that. It was unmute. I'm Mike Bunny with Stagecoach GID. There was a comment or a class mentioned earlier for open meeting law. I just wanted some more information on that if that's available or where can we get the information for that? Who presented it?
Ms. Lopez.
Hi, Erin Lopez, for the record, I was the one that spoke about it. You can reach out to me through email if you want some more information. I can give it to you now if you like. If you have a pencil ready or you can call the county and you can find me at the County Manager's Office.
I do have the pencil ready.
It's E Lopez at lion-dash-county.org. Would you like a phone number?
No, this this is good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? If not, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at this time, twelve forty five.